It's nine o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting slash workshop. The first item on the agenda concerning discussion is discuss Phase Two programming for the 1916 City Hall. I guess to open up the discussion, we've had our initial feasibility study and master plan, then, let's see, in August of 2019, there was a revised study. And today, we're going to discuss the project on proceeding with Phase Two. Not for sure commissioners where to go, but I think first, we maybe just share our thoughts, maybe. And I know my concern, and it mentioned before, is the increase of square footage. Looking at the program, it seems like we've got some duplicate spaces, break areas, storage, and things like that. I think when we look at the 1916 renovation, our basic concept should be to stay within the 21,600 square feet. I think that was a square footage noted in the original feasibility study. And maybe for direction, look at a budget, too, that we can have a price range to stay I did, using the price estimate that was given to us in August of 2019, it looked like the renovation cost was $179 a square foot. So if you look at the 21,600 gross square footage, that had put the project at $3,866,400. So I think there's some things that we can discuss, looking at multi-use spaces. The commission meeting room, it seems like it works well here in City Hall, so.
Memorial.
Or here in the Memorial Hall.
Right.
And I think, you know, for our uses, is it necessary to relocate? And I know there's, looking at the courtroom, when we dedicate a space that size for one day a week, what's our options there? We were looking in the second phase also of a construction onto the building, some demolition and new construction that maybe is something we need to consider. We have to watch our overall cost. But I'll throw that out to the commission for initial discussion. But I think if maybe we discuss first and then allow Andy and Ian to listen, I think they're looking for direction on how to proceed with the next phase. So commissioners.
Yeah, I agree with your opening statement, Mayor. And as far as a courtroom, you know, since we're scaling back and there's only going to be a court in session one day a week, you know, I've checked with the Montgomery County Courthouse and where the commissioners have their meeting at. They just meet on Mondays, and that room is vacant. If there's a duplicate space that we can incorporate and use, because we're always looking to team up with the county where we can, and that might be a place to look, to where it's got the benches, it's got, it could be maybe modified to some part to be a courtroom, but that would free up some space because with the police going back into the 1916 City Hall, you know, I'm looking to find more space for them, more usable space for them, that will accommodate, will accommodate them. So that was an option that I thought we might want to look at and see if we could come up with, if we go that route, decide to do that, come up with an arrangement, maybe with judicial Montgomery Court system, and see if that would be feasible and workable, and maybe with some minor modification, we could repurpose that room. Because like I said, it's just going to be one day a week, and we could work it into where it would be available for us. So that was one of the ideas I had.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. As we, as I've looked at this, I realize that I don't have the expertise a lot concerning construction methodology and materials and those types of things. So I'm really at a loss of how I might contribute in that way. But one of the things that strikes me is that, is that we are in a very uncertain time. There are lots of questions about the what the future of, of work looks like for us right now, as we consider what social distancing changes really need to be made in order for us to define a safe workspace. And those types of considerations would possibly be answered by, by structures that look differently than, let's say, multiple-story structures on a single corner of a block. So as I look at this, I have a great deal of uncertainty myself about what the future brings. I do know what the trend lines are telling us in terms of the nature of the City of Independence. I do know that in order for us to build accordingly, we really have to build in, within the structure, flexibility, adaptability, something that can adjust over time and that won't become obsolete in the near future, should we build it in a certain way, then technologies change or service delivery changes, or those kinds of things happen in this rapidly changing world that we live in, such that the investment that we make in structures becomes wasteful. So I really would like to see where this conversation leads us in terms of strategic alignment, in terms of future concerns, adaptability, flexibility, some agility, as opposed to, you know, once you build a building, it is the size that it is from that point forward. So it's, it's just, as we, you know, conduct this conversation this morning, I'll be looking for things like that. You know, Independence is, is changing as well, and what we know is that there is, as we look across the city, the Arco Building is just an example of what the world is doing to large, multi-story administrative spaces. And I just don't know what to think of that at this point, except that it's an indicator that we need to take a look at. So let's go ahead and get started with the conversation, I guess, and then I will weigh in with my questions during that conversation.
Yeah, I think keeping this at a brainstorming session to get ideas flowing, and then come back, that, you know, the advantage of brainstorming, there's no restriction, and a lot of times, something that might be discarded can be modified to, to become a viable solution. But, you know, some of the things you brought up, you know, flexible space, there's some advantages when we look at, at open office planning, you know, to determine what level or what stage do you actually need a four-walled office. Open office gives you the flexibility to change layouts with technology, too. You're not confined with walls to pull power through. One, another thing, when we're looking at particularly the COVID, some of the transmission through air, of course, we'll be looking at improved HVAC systems, but consider with office space, what about the filtration? Do we or can we provide a higher level of filtration to start reducing the particulates that would be a health risk in an environment? So, you know, the advantage of open office space, you get better airflow, you eliminate dead corners and that, but then also with the system being able to filter out, you know, do we go with HEPA filters or, you know, the, the air change that would keep us in a healthy environment? One thing, as we look, I think now we have the opportunity to not just look at City Hall administration, police, and fire EMS, but we've got some spaces that extend beyond that for offices, and we start looking at some of our facilities. We've got aged structures that also need, need modification. The water sewer, we've talked before of needing to remodel the restrooms there and a break room, and work at the sanitation building. The street department, the temporary office space that we provided maybe five or six years, it was constructed, you know, a mobile unit, which is intended to be temporary, but it's starting to fail. So as we're looking at this picture, is it now the time to consider administration, police, fire EMS, but how can we then group public works into an acceptable facility that would consolidate office space? So we don't have three break rooms in the outlying buildings, but confined to one. We can have one shower facility for public works and restroom facilities. You know, now we're expanding the program, but yet, in fact, we can take advantage of some cost savings and space savings, both in the renovation of the 1916 City Hall, but at the same time, we're addressing issues that we've known existed for a number of years. And, you know, I guess the question was, if we've known that they've existed and we haven't addressed them, then how much longer are we going to wait? So we really need to, in brainstorming, look at those, those issues also, of how can we do a better job of managing the total facilities? And a few months back, Chief Harrison presented a report, a consolidating dispatch, and now I'm just throwing this out as brainstorming, but, you know, for some time, the county dispatch has been utilizing the same room that city dispatch. But what about, is it a point that we can consider a regional dispatch? You know, where, where are we going to go? And even in, in doing that, we look at an add-on facility and the portion that was going to be raised to accomplish that, or a standalone facility that would be not independent, but a regional section. So I think this is some items maybe we want to throw out for brainstorming, too, that we keep it flexible enough to how, how can we meet our needs more efficiently? Commissioners?
No, I, I think you're right. You know, we, Dean and I, we've had a chance to look at the existing facilities, and I think the last facility that was, that was built was the sanitation building, and I believe Mike told me that was in the seventies. And most of those buildings are old, they're just kind of, they're in a lot of, need a lot of repair, a lot of upgrades. And maybe now is the time, with, with everything that's changing, to look at a bigger picture and a broader picture and come up with a bold plan that addresses more than just what we're dealing with right now. Like you said, a lot of these issues have been, have come to the forefront, and they're not new. They've been known for a good number of years, but maybe now is the time that we can collectively put our heads together and come up with a plan that addresses more than what we're looking at today, and that will get the City of Independence and the facilities upgraded into the, into the future, what they will look like, and get them, get us further down the road, because we basically used up what we have now. We've made do with being crammed into a building that's old and decrepit, and it's not worth putting an investment into. We've already got our worth out of it. So let's start looking at how we can address more than just what we're looking at today, but all these other issues, and see how we can tie that together, come up with something sensible and reasonable that, that we can move toward on.
Well, one of the things with the, the changes in technology, with HVAC equipment, LED lighting, the higher efficiency by eliminating some of the old systems, increased insulation of the conditioned spaces, we're going to save money in a new outline facility. And, you know, looking at the 1916 building that had window air conditioners and a boiler, we didn't have proper fresh air, we had stagnant airspace, we had poor ventilation and circulation, so we had inherent health issues in the building. But just by renovating that, the efficiency of the new equipment, the insulation on the roof, potential insulation of, of other spaces, the new windows, our operating efficiency of the building is going to increase, which operational costs will decrease. One thing, you know, Dean, you mentioned, once a building's built, that's a square footage you live with, and it's, it's best that we look at what we need and not overbuild, that we don't get into as changing technology or workforce changes, we have more than what's actually necessary, because there's other options for space.
May I, may I comment on that? And building what we need is, is important. We need what we need to conduct the services and the business of the city. But that, that word, need, changes over time. That's possibly what gives me the greatest pause with new construction, is that defining need today is based on what we know today, and we don't know what we don't know about the future. So those changes give me a great deal of, of concern about, you know, adding square footage to the city's current infrastructure, because it could very well be, there's probably at least a 50/50 percent, a 50/50 chance that we'll actually need less square footage in the future. And so that, that concern drives me, drives the question again, what, you talked, you talked about operational costs, of course, and what we would like to see is the operating, our operational costs stay under control or decline with smart implementations of technology and utilizations of space and all those kinds of things, which was, which really drove the question that I asked these fellows when they were here last time, is did we ever give you an opportunity, you know, a cost target that says, this is what we think we can afford right now, to help us kind of figure out what can we get for that much money? When we give you, I don't know how to define it, except that we give you our perception of the perfect structure, and we design and build our design towards the perfect consolidation of square footage and interconnection of departmental responsibilities and such, we get, effectively, we get a $16 million solution. I don't, I don't know whether that we can afford that or not, but I think that will drive some debt, and it will drive some risk, because what's perfect for what we understand is our, our current operations and our current service levels and our current staffing, against the uncertainty of what any, any of those things will be 10 years from now, is, is, is creates risk in putting a, a $16 million solution in place. So defining what we can afford, doing what cost-benefit analysis that we can with the data that we have available, and understanding what Louis was referring to, is understanding what our long-term capital commitments are to the city, including, not just the structures that we've talked about, but, but our streets, the city streets, city infrastructure of, of all kinds, and then understanding if, can we, can we afford, or what can we afford in terms of additional city building space while also servicing at the level that we wish these other infrastructure needs? I don't know what that answer is, so I, I put that out there as part of this process, we ought to be developing some financial estimates, some debt levels that we're comfortable with, and, and figuring out what size structure then we can afford, so we can give these guys a chance at being successful.
At, at the time when these figures were announced originally, because I was part of that steering committee, and I remember, I think Jennifer Rutledge was the city clerk at that time, and I was, I was, I'm going by memory, and if, if, if I say something that figures not right or incorrect, jump in, correct me, but if I remember right, we could, we had a debt level, we could borrow up to around $13 million. But I remember her making a statement that that would, if you committed that amount of money to what the original design and plan was, that why would you want to? Because that would pretty well put you to the very top of the debt level that you could carry. And that statement, I do remember, and I'm, I believe I'm right, I believe it was 13 million, 13 and a half million dollars. So it, so that made me think that even though this is what came out of this, why would you want to commit that kind of money to a project that you were at your debt limit, legal debt limit, that you could carry? So right there, that was a non-starter to me when that came out, that, that we kind of got the cart before the horse, because we were already in a structure, and then there was no clarity given as, as to far, as to far as a budget set for what this, this new facility would look like, or square footage that would be needed. So the building continued to get bigger and the costs continued to escalate. So, so the choices that we had to make were really, they were already dictated by us. We, we weren't operating under a, a budget or a dollar amount that we had to stay within. This is what the square footage we, we think we need, and you guys said, this is what the cost is going to be. So that's how we ended up with all these different figures as an end result. So we kind of got, we kind of got everything in reverse. So now we're trying to back up and do it a more, in a logical manner, and determine what kind of dollars are we willing to commit to this, and then what, what will this building look like? But I agree with Dean, this, it has to be flexible, because as, as technology and everything changes, especially with COVID-19, it's got to be flexible and adaptable. So what it might look like and be used today or the next three or four or five years could change again after that. So there's got to be some building flexibility and adaptable, adaptability to change it into, within something else that still makes it a functional building, but, but makes it usable. We can still use it as the trends dictate into the future, because nobody knows what they are. But if you have the flexibility and adaptability, then, then you can make a building work. You can make it work, because it's designed to, to give you that, give you that ability to do. So that's what I remember from this, from the steering committee.
If we, if we start with the 1916 building and the square footage that's there, that's our limitation by the walls that are there. So then the step would be to start putting the assigned spaces within the building, considering multi-use space. When you look through the program space, I notice multiple references to break rooms, restrooms, conference rooms, meeting rooms, storage, secured storage, unsecured storage, and, and then mention the commission and courtroom, office for the judge, and office for the prosecuting attorney. So there's things that, you know, they're nice. There's no, no doubt about it that they would be nice, but first then, are they necessary? And you put the necessary spaces in the building first, and then come up, because storage, there's other options. Technology is changing, storage requirements, the police has evidence that's pretty static, which could be something more to grow, but, you know, what we look at, if we take the 21,600 square feet, we can come up with a, a project range. The $179 a square foot dictated a certain level of construction also, so there's flexibility in it. You know, right now, on the second floor, we've, we've saved historic walls, but in reality, what's accomplished by saving that historic wall up there is that limiting the use of the space, that if the wall was gone, we've got more flexibility with open design or, or new, new construction of interior partitions where needed, so we can better utilize the space. I think that's where we're at, is the historic walls that are actually historic should be considered, but the ones that are historic because they're original, that we're not going to get a significant benefit of usable space by them remaining, would be removed. And, you know, so with, with that, we can come up with an operating budget. Now the question then is, well, will it fit and what do we have to leave out? That's where the designers come in, to come back and tell us, you can't, you can't fit it in, or, yeah, we got it and you got extra space. One thing. One thing we've got the advantage of with multiple HVAC systems in the building, we're, you know, we're not going to consider a chiller and a boiler. So we're looking at, at split systems, probably forced air. So it gives us the flexibility of conditioning the spaces that we need. So during the hours of occupation and should space decrease, it gives us some flexibility there, also temperature control and benefits also. So I think we can, we can come up with a range to consider for, for that building. And similarly, if we went back to the, the fire EMS with the apparatus bay, I think it was an option B, we've, we got square footage and we look at within a pre-engineered structure, we can get the space. I think with the existing, looking at the numbers that were in the feasibility study, we're looking at about an additional 5,824 square feet. And the cost I saw in one of the estimates was $155 a square foot. So that would put 900,000, so you know, looking at 900,000 to a million dollar addition there, we've, we've got phase two within the four to five million for both facilities. Just kind of a, a place to start.
Leonard, something that I thought of also with, with the facility for fire and EMS because those people will be, be living in that facility and it, and we definitely need a facility for them. But I also thought that being, that with fire and EMS, for many years they did code enforcement and I thought maybe in that facility, that would be at least consideration, a starting point for maybe having your, your code enforcement people, cubicle setup if they need a cubicle, that that would be a starting place that they would report to rather than to City Hall because they were part of that, that structure at one time, at least something to throw out that we might think about anyway.
Then when we, if we look at, we're, we're going to consider the, the outlying other buildings in the property there, then code enforcement could come with public works too.
Yeah.
So you know, there's, there's that flexibility. Wherever it, it doesn't fit, we still have that tie-in facility as we're cleaning up
Well, you know, I'm a, I'm, I'm a fan of what we call or what has been called in, in my previous experience, line of sight management. So those types of functions that we have consolidated or moved into City Hall over the years that are leadership positions or supervisory positions of personnel that are in the field, probably we could consider any of those positions as if we move it in the, move those in the direction of where the work is going on as opposed to where the administration is going on. I feel like that's an improvement in overall efficiency and operational effectiveness. So I, I have heard what you said and I think that what you're talking about in my vernacular is line of sight management.
And it, it starts addressing some space issues that we might've had initially and then, you know, as you bring groups together, more efficiency of equipment and, and data
You know, when, when we, us three gentlemen, we don't, we don't have an office space other than our home. So everything we get from the city, documents coming from Kelly and staff and they're coming to us over the internet, either on a laptop or desktop or through phone. And we manage the business of the city, which means that you can manage the business anywhere you can have a connection. You're not tied to an office or we're not tied to an office or a particular point. Anywhere we go, we can get information anytime we want it, right here or on a, on a laptop that we carry as long as we've got a connection. So business can be done anywhere. So I, I think that's what's driving this whole discussion here, that the part where all your departments and everything were located in a building and you know, years ago that was because the only, the only communication you had was that landline phone. You did all your business on that, but now we're not tied down and restricted by that. So I, I think we're all thinking along the same line. Technology will drive what the facility is going to look like and how we do business and who actually needs to be where.
Well, even look at from COVID, the, the change of conferences, how many conferences have been conducted through, through Zoom? There was a teleconference or I don't know if that's what, a Zoom conference with a representative. My mind went blank. Who?
Senator Moran?
Yeah. And we're spread out, but yet it was conducted very efficiently. So you know, on a small scale, that could still happen in a, in a city administration environment. The technology, I think that's kind of what you've been talking about.
Indeed.
Dean is how can we look at utilizing the technology and not utilizing square footage maybe?
Indeed. Well, what you're talking about is how we define proximity and 100 years ago, proximity was defined physically. You know, if you were 10 feet away, you had a lot more efficient communications with somebody. But proximity in the modern world has more to do with connectivity, being connected to someone and you can connect with someone via your telephone, even video via, via, via your telephone. So you can actually see people. So proximity, the definition of proximity and, and the, you know, the capability to work closely together with someone is no longer a, a physical measurement so much it is, as it is an electronic connectivity measurement. So when we talk about this, of course, that if you're, if you're going to say, yeah, that seems to be the way we want to go, we also have to look at, are we putting the right technology into these spaces so that we can actually accomplish that? Because if you don't put this tech, the support of that technology into your spaces and you do suffer connectivity issues, then you have sacrificed your digital proximity. So you got to do that at the best, the, the highest rate that we can afford, you know, at the time. So, yeah.
Yeah. I, when you mentioned that, I, I forgot it was, I was on a shopping mission. My wife needed a pair of shoes and she wasn't able to get out, concerned about COVID. So I braved the virus and, and the worst part, I braved going to pick her out a pair of shoes and I'm panicking and standing there looking at women's shoes and I thought, well, the cell phone, video call. So you know what, what Dean is talking about, that the technology has changed, that you know, I could hold the phone and so this pair, this pair, you know? And, and with the proper technology, we can take our supervisor into the field and communicate with administration without that direct contact of, of a piece of paper or actually being on site as long as those provisions are being provided in the initial phase. So you know, with the whole, whole thing I think we're talking about today is critical to look at the operation of the city as a whole, not just looking at, at one piece. That we do consider the technology that we have today, but try to, to look at, into the future of it getting more advanced and becoming more beneficial in our operation and also cost savings amount that actual paper files will decrease and electronic And, and what we've, we've talked about, the, the square footage prices that you included in your projected budgets, you were based upon a type of construction of finished material. Was this something that is an accurate figure that if we used it in square footage, that we could establish a fairly doable budget to consider at this time?
That's a hard question in today's age. It's the same thing you've been talking about with, with what we feel like where the market has gone. We have seen some very positive reactions because there is a perception of potential slowdowns, so contractors seem to be hungry. So we think the market may actually stay flat from an escalation standpoint. What we're concerned more about is labor because what we're seeing is a decrease in the amount of labor that's available and then also the needed flexibility for contractors that, you know, workers can't come to the job site if they're ill. And so it's, it's also put a premium on that. So where the market goes over the next year, everybody is trying to have that crystal ball and understanding where that's going. Most of the indications we are seeing is it's been that it's going to actually be a, a flat escalation. You know, we were originally looking at about almost double-digit figures escalation going into 21, but I think most people are anticipating that to remain pretty constant with where we are with the market right now. So I guess the short answer is potentially, I think that's something though, that we need to go back and study based upon the actual scheme because this was, this was saying, hey, we're going to renovate the building, not knowing exactly what we're going to do. Now we may have, we will have a better idea of what we're going to do inside, how much walls we'll actually remove so we can get a much more detailed look at those dollars. So that's a really non-answer for you, Mayor, but.
So if, if we said, using for the 1916 building, if we wanted to stay, and this is a wide span between three and four million dollars at this point, that's conceivable that we could achieve a design within that range.
Yes, I think the parameters that you've begun to discuss today is what program can we fit within the existing footprint of the 1916 City Hall building? And so that's kind of one step. Then the question is, is if we do that, does that then remain within that parameters of a budget? If it does, great. If it doesn't, then what are the things that we need to do? If it's higher than that, what are the things we need to bring that number down? Then at that same time, what doesn't fit in that 21,000 square feet? And what are we sacrificing or having to change to accommodate that square footage? And then at the same time, look at an addition at your existing apparatus bay to determine what goes there and how much that begins to cost. Having those parameters are very clear objectives for us to move forward, to be able to give you some ideas. So that, that is, that is very helpful. I mean, it kind of, I've been taking, we've all been kind of taking notes and kind of, I don't want to try to jump around, but where the, where design goes in the neck, in the future has been talked about internally, we're trying to figure out if we ever go back to our office, we, we, you know, there's a lot of changes that I don't think anybody really knows. You know, three months ago, we all probably thought we'd be in a different environment come summertime. Now I think we're all realizing that, you know, there's going to be changes that are going to be afoot and we don't know exactly what that means. You know, workspaces before were getting smaller. Does that mean now that workspaces need to be different as we move forward? I think there's a lot of things and we always are an advocate of flexibility as you think about your space because we can't predict what's going to happen in the next year, let alone the next 10 to 20 years as we go forward. So we'll always look at an open office concept, how we can use furniture systems to best utilize your space. And so it minimizes the potential for change as you begin to adapt over that time. There's been significant improvements within this last few months on how we be able to help the buildings adapt and are better as a, a well-building system. And we don't have the sick bend building system. And I was on a seminar yesterday where they're talking about UV lighting, where we're integrating UV lighting into our systems that help us with the, with the, with the disinfecting and be able to make sure we have clean air. Now, of course, there's a cost associated with that, but then there's a comfort that comes with that. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that begin to really think about that. But if we, if we begin to set some of the parameters of here are the program changes that we think we can accommodate, obviously the commission chambers courtroom is a big, big square footage. If you say, let's take that out and let's look at other options, then what does that begin to, to begin to say? Dispatch is another big factor when you think about the facility because it requires a certain level of construction that we have to meet per code. So that begins to also drive cost. So again, that's kind of another thing to think about. But you know, the other thing you've talked about is the, you know, the historical walls and whether we remove any of those and then Vance and Ian can speak better than that, but what is the impact of, is it more efficient and are we sacrificing any potential tax credits because we're taking those features out and kind of weighing those factors that go along with that? So all of those are things that through kind of the next phase that we can begin to look at is at the 1916 facility, you know, what are the impacts? What are the changes? How do we best utilize that facility? And ultimately, what does that mean from a cost perspective? What does that mean from an operational perspective? What are you sacrificing programmatically? What are you maybe sacrificing from a financial standpoint and so forth?
I noticed, you know, on second floor, we, in the old fire department, the locker room, the locker area, we saved those. They're, they're nice. They're unique, but they're not functional now. They're, we have no benefit, so why lose that square footage and preserve that historic tax credit? That's going to cost a space and functionality of the building. So I think those are some questions that I think are, you know, I guess I always have struggled with historic preservation when we preserve something for the stake of it being old and it, it's no longer relevant. You know, I've struggled with leaving old single pane wood windows, restoring them and putting a storm window over it when the whole thing could be replaced with a modern insulated glass clad window that's going to outperform what we've got, but we've preserved. I, I guess in Europe, they're not that sensitive as we are that their buildings are 300 or 400 years old and they're putting new windows in it, you know, they've realized the value. But you know, when we're looking at, at what we need is a, a budget that's realistic to our means and independence and, and going through, you know, the, the, the population change and the economic change that we can get the most efficient use of the space possible at the least cost, but you know, not, not sacrifice quality that we've created in a, a maintenance issue that we're not going to benefit from the, the change. Training spaces, you know, we've got this facility too of, of any type of, of employee training, we can utilize without committing additional space. It's not as convenient, but it's not used all the time, not necessary. So we, we can use. It's not as convenient, but it's not used all the time, not necessary, so we can use other outlying space other than designating new space to the same potential we have here. And I know, Kelly and I have been visiting some about Memorial Hall and during previous remodel, how we ignored a substantial space of the building that could have added revenue and, you know, how do we, we look at those things that we include them into our, our project and the changes in technology that we might be spending a little more for the technology now, but it's going to put us, we're cutting maintenance, we're, we're going to benefit with some of these things. I think that's where we want to see that we can utilize technology that's going to come along to benefit the community as a whole.
Yeah, I agree. We need to look at, we need to look at the whole picture on this. As far as historical credits, this, what I believed was that if you kept the facade, if the facade was historical and you kept that, then everything behind the facade you could change and determine how you wanted that to look like, as long as you kept that original face intact. But once you got through that facade, that whole inside could be turned into however you saw fit, however you wanted it to be. So, that still remains, that does not remain true.
That's not, not true.
That's not how I, so I didn't see that quite right then.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we address it appropriately. In Kansas, we have a state preservation statute that any building that's being remodeled by a government or even an individual who gets a building permit and their building is listed on the state or national registers has to go through a review. That review not only looks at the exterior, but it also looks at the interior and what are the character defining features. And there's standards that are used, and the standards we use are standards for rehabilitation. So, that acknowledges that buildings can change, that you don't have to preserve everything in there. What you try to do, though, is to make sure that you evaluate the building, determine what those important features are, and look at repairing or preserving those. So, in our first phase of City Hall, what we did is we didn't want to jeopardize the tax credits, so we did selective demolition that removed the previous remodeling components. And then, we left the historic walls that we could determine were historic, and we left them in place. So, that is part of the second phase of design, we can then look at what the spatial needs are for the city and look at what changes we are, can propose. And the goal would be that we would do it within those standards to allow you to be able to claim the 25% tax credit and be able to generate some return just by going through that program. But it is exterior and interior.
Okay. My question then would be to follow up with what you just said. Lyndon made the remark about historic wall, removing historic wall. Is it still, what I'm getting at is if we change some of that and eliminate some that was preserved, that would just lessen the amount with that, that would lessen the amount of historical credit, or that would put it in jeopardy of even getting a historical credit?
Right. From the program, it's all or nothing. If you can't meet the standards with your entire project, then you wouldn't receive the credits. But, you know, like I said before, these standards allow a building to change, so not everything has to be preserved, not every wall has to be preserved.
Right.
It's a matter of evaluating each, each historic building.
So, the, so my next question would be then, you have to determine, in order to get the historical credits, is that a plus or a minus? Because if it, if it restricts you on what the design of the interior of the building would be, and it hampers its flexibility and adaptability, at some point, then those tax credits you would get may become a wash, because what you give up in order to get a tax credit initially is a plus at the front, but the back end is that it may not be a plus, because now you've lost the ability to, for adaptability, for change in the immediate future as, as things develop and things change. So, at some point, it no longer becomes relevant because of being hampered. And with the design and moving forward, so at some point, you determine that we would, might be better off of moving in this direction, and we forego that, but down the road, long range, we will be better off. We will, with the flexibility, adaptability, changeability, we will be able to recoup that. Down the road, we'll forego what we initially get, but in the long run, we may be better off if it turns out to be that it's going to be a wash. We either get this and don't get that, or we give up this, but we get so much more by going in this direction. At some point, it becomes moot, that it, that's no longer a consideration. It hampers us too much with design and what we really need, what we're really looking at, and at that point, it just becomes like a dinosaur. Do we want to carry it along, or do we want to put it with the rest of the dinosaurs?
Right, there could be that opportunity or issue to where the standards aren't allowing you to make the change that you want. So, you would then determine that the tax credits aren't worth going through the program. Unfortunately, the city does have a requirement to go through the state law process, which is the same review process for the tax credits. And so, if you choose not to create a project that complies with the sector of interior standards, there are legal steps the city has to take in order to say, we're going to do a project that does not follow the state preservation statute. And so, you will be going through a process regardless of whether you're looking at the tax credits or not. That's the advantage of, in phase two, can we meet your needs by meeting the sector of interior standards within this historic building and give you something that is, allows you to be eligible for the, for the tax credits? That's the win-win. That's what we're hoping to accomplish.
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping you would say. I was just trying to clear up some misconceptions that I had and, and make sure. So, maybe in the end result is it'll be a win-win. We, we still get the flexibility that we need, and we're still able to obtain tax credits, which I think at the time you estimated were around maybe eight to $900,000 initially.
Right, depending on the cost of the project and a lot of expenses, it can add up and be significant.
Right, okay.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
In this building, we worked, we had historic tax credits on this project, and we did work with the historic state board and all of that. And there were things that we did have to leave, but we were able to take some original walls out. There were original walls over there, there were original walls upstairs, and we were still able to take those out and get those tax credits. So, in this, in the case of this building, which is what I have experience with on the tax credits, is the state did work with us. They did make us do certain things, like the, the doors that went up and down in the gym, they had to, to keep those in place and had to leave the mechanisms in that wall. We had to leave the, the front view when you came in, those, those walls, so you still had the same view, but we were able to take the sidewalls out and open that up. So, I mean, there, there is some flexibility unless it's changed since we did this project, that they will work with you. And then, of course, the commission, which we have done in the past, does have the authority to override those requirements through a process. So, you do have options.
Correct. That's encouraging them, that they're not so, that they're not rigid, that they're flexible and they're willing to at least consider some of the changes and, and be agreeable to them if they still meet.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. It's good to know.
And as you work out your design, looking at the space requirements from the program, you'll first work with the walls that are there, and as they don't, if they start compromising space, then you propose to remove that wall and kind of, you know, it's, I guess, like a, like a stone mason, you get a whole pile of stone, and he starts cutting them to fit in, but he never picks up a stone and forces it in the wall. There comes a time when you've got to shape it to fit, and that's basically what you're going to shape the spaces to fit, but there comes a time that if it takes you to cut that wall out to better accommodate the bond or the, the adhesion of the, the plan, that that would happen. So, it's, it's something that you'll only know when you start laying out the actual space. And, you know, we have to give you the overall concept to allow you to start sitting down, you know, like we did back in the day, start cutting out your pieces of paper, sliding them around, overlaying the paper, the tracing paper, rip that one, move them around. Yeah, so, that's what we're trying to get to today with enough direction that you can go back with the program and start cutting out your spaces and fitting them into that 21,600 square foot block.
That's correct, yes.
So, gentlemen, what, what we've talked about and given you so far, what do you, what do you, what are we lacking, not telling you? Do you, you have a better idea of what it is we're asking and looking for, or you need more additional conversation from us to proceed at this point? What questions do you have that maybe we haven't talked about or answered, or you still need clarity or some direction on?
Commissioner, if I understand correctly, we need to provide a concept that provides as much program as possible, and there's going to be options associated with that, that would fit within the existing footprint of the 1916 City Hall. And then, ultimately, how much does that cost? If that is within kind of that parameters, three to $4 million, then we may have a good direction. If it's not, we'll also give you options of how we can reduce that overall cost moving forward. We'll illustrate probably options of how program pieces and parts fit in there, based upon some of the discussions that we've heard today and previously have heard of removing some of those program items. And we'll also make sure that we, you know, look at the efficiencies of that layout and whether any of that historical items are impacting or helping us through that process. At the same time, we'll look at your existing apparatus bay and the addition for fire and EMS at that location and understand what that scope is, and then again, what that costs are. If that seems to align with where your thinking is, I think we, we have good direction on those items. I think the toughest conversation's going to come when we come back and show you what programs fit and ultimately where we have to make those changes.
Right, I understand. And my, my other point that I made earlier is like, where we have our, our meetings now, very functional, and it, and this building is multiple, multipurpose use. So, if we have existing facilities that we're using now, whether it be here or in collaboration with the county, we need at least be open to, rather than making duplicate spaces, if the spaces already exist and it's being underutilized, and we can take advantage of that, then why incorporate something into when we have a facility or a space that already exists? And it's, and it's already being supported by the taxpayer. So, that just gives us more flexibility for another use in this, in the 1916 facility that we're looking at, because that's what we're looking at. We're looking at what actually needs to, this needs to consist of, and where can we take advantage of something that we already have and we're using and we can continue to use because it's, it's functional, it meets our needs. We don't need to reincorporate it in another facility when it already exists. So, at least be open to that, and I think that my fellow commissioners would be open to that, so, because we have to look at everything, everything, all the facilities, whether they're city-owned or county-owned. If we, we're always looking at collaboration. If we can work with them and come up with a solution, that we're, I mean, we should at least consider it.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you mean the footprint of the existing building, are you counting that addition that's already on there that we're looking at potentially taking down and reconstructing the old hay stables and that first floor apparatus that was added on? Are you, do you mean the footprint that it currently is now and reutilizing that and reconstructing that area? I'm just trying to clarify.
First, look at utilizing it as it is, don't you think, commissioners?
Demolition of a space and rebuilding would drive a higher cost, would it not?
Definitely.
Okay, so, I would say that this pass, in terms of the scope of work that Andy was talking about earlier, would be utilizing the space as it currently exists.
Okay.
Am I right?
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Hayes?
I just was going to confirm that the scope of work that Andy just described to us seems like it's comprehensive, and that should give us something to work with going forward, especially if, if it falls in the total cost of, you know, with, with the apparatus bay included of the four to $5 million, then we can, we can begin to put some cost benefit analysis against that and determine whether that's the best use of $5 million right now, so.
And look at, for the fire EMS addition, 900 to a million. And commissioners, as we've talked about the...
Sorry, may I clarify? I think that number that I just said, four to $5 million, was inclusive of the $1 million for the apparatus bay. Okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, that's what...
Thank you.
Today, we talked about a public works facility with consolidating space. What we're going to need eventually, depending on that schedule, is an idea of vehicles and type of storage, base space, to look at how that would translate into a design. So, if, if Kelly, you could start working with the departments to get an idea, a number of vehicles, a number of vehicles that need to be in a heated space, number of vehicles that need to be covered, and for each department, a list of equipment and number of employees on a shift that would determine break size, break room size or restroom, some requirements. That'll help as we go forward looking as, at the whole picture of our, our needs, so.
We need to modify, our trainer's going to work on that as well, so we need to modify their contract to include that.
Right now, we're just getting the information together for our in-house use.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't authorized that, because if, once we determine what will fit within the existing 1916 building, then we've got the determination of, do we really need that position that won't fit in there? Do we need space? Or can we reduce and consolidate? Because, you know, some, some of the spaces look sufficient, large. You know, Southwestern Bell, their clerks get 80 square feet, period. The next lineup gets 100 square feet, period, and it's all an open office plan, so it doesn't seem restricted. But, space costs money, and sometimes, you know, downsizing might accommodate our budget more than adding a space, but then, you know, off-site storage is a possible, it's not convenient, but why spend $179 a square foot if we can put it in a $75 to $100 square foot pre-engineered building that's conditioned? You know... You know, so there's there's some things that we can look at that, too. But no, that, back to Kelly, that's just for our in-house look at getting an idea of what we have and what each department and what they would need to go to the next step.
And we did look at that several years ago, but some of the equipment stuff may have changed, so I'll get that redone.
Yeah, and and, you know, the last few years, you've been doing some changes and addressing some of the issues that has has helped the departments operate, but it takes the burden of their work away. So, you know, we we have that evaluation, too.
Okay.
So, okay.
Vance and and I have a question on new construction cost. When we initially did the steering committee and those figures were given, has that changed? It was set at $249 a square foot. Is that still pretty much in the same ballpark? Because that was given to us a couple of years ago. Does that remain the same or gone up or decreased?
Commissioner, I think that kind of goes back to.
Just curiosity.
Yeah, it goes back to my original comment of, yes, I think it is consistent where we are.
Okay.
Because we we haven't seen the escalation that was originally being anticipated. So currently, there there's more of a flat escalation for years going forward, and so I think that is consistent.
Okay. And material costs, have they remained flat during during this time period?
It it depends on the industry. There, the majority of materials have been able to superside any sort of shortage or supply chain issues. Again, the issues that we've seen more has been impacts within labor.
Okay.
And so that that's been the bigger issue, and it's really depends on region by region of how the labor market's been impacted.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
And if we look at a range, that'll give us a truer picture on what to expect.
Correct.
Because there's, there's always, you know, the the cost of construction, square foot cost is just an idea.
It's a starting point, correct.
Because you never, you never know then. If we always look at a range, we'll be able to work within that, anticipate the low end, be prepared for the high end.
Correct.
So commissioners, any further comments or questions for Vance, Andy, or Ian?
No, I just thank you, gentlemen, for being here this morning. I really appreciate it and look forward to seeing your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. I think we've given you all the or given you enough clarity of for you to proceed on that, and we're real, I'm really excited to see what this design is going to look like and gives us the ability to to make changes, fine tune it when we see what the concept is, and especially if it fits within the workable parameter that we set as far as dollar amounts, because that's with all our other needs, we've got to be, we've got to meet a lot of needs, so we need to make sure that we 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 get this right. We've got too many other issues that we need to follow up with that are going to require vast amounts of money also.
Appreciate your work. The detail and the presentation has been been appreciated, very accurate. We can see from phase one, the the cost coming in with with the bid, we've got something we can rely on, I know.
Sometimes you get lucky.
That that phase one, the only thing outstanding on that is waiting for the windows? Is the roof complete?
Uh, yeah, the the roof work was complete, I believe, a few weeks ago, so.
Okay.
Now it's just waiting for the windows and the skylights that go on the roof, so.
And the windows were pushed back, like 10 to 12 weeks?
Uh, it was eight weeks out from the initial order. The contractor says he still thinks it's about eight weeks out, but we're still waiting to hear from the factory, from Menko Windows, what the their their estimated delivery date is. So he's, I've instructed him to give us an updated overall project schedule once, once he knows that date specifically for when they'll be able to start installing windows.
Okay, just keep us updated, and if there's anything you need, you know how to get ahold of us.
Yep.
Okay, appreciate it, gentlemen. Be safe, be safe on your way home. Stay well.
Updates, Ian does, and I put those on the website, so you can always check that, too, for the latest updates on that project.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next, next item, items for action. Item A, consider adopting an ordinance relating to requirements for the CRS program. David?
Mayor, this is an item that we discussed last week where we went back and tweaked it just a little bit. In the floodplain, we're requiring anybody that is doing anything to their property to submit a blood, a building permit. The purposes behind this is so that we can monitor the floodplain, and it is also used by FEMA in the case of a flood to help establish the cost of reimbursement and insurance purposes. And we went back and modified that quite a little bit per the commission's request, and Jeff completed that, so we're here to ask you guys to approve that ordinance.
I think that was item number two on page two of the ordinance. Commissioners, for your reference, so any questions for David on the modification?
I have none.
Commissioner, you say?
I have none, mayor.
Thank you, David. So with that, I'll, if there are no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that move the city to adopt the following ordinance, ordinance 4330, repealing and replacing city code sections 18-35 and 18-37.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item B, consider setting the date of August 27, 2020 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 201 East Main. David?
Mayor, it was discovered by staff approximately last week, driving by, we saw what appeared to be lights on in the building, and with further investigation, utilizing the tire truck, we discovered along the west wall, a large section had collapsed. We contacted several local professionals, including the mayor, to come up and look at it. There are multiple collapses on the roof, but what is concerning, I said east, but it's the west wall, the collapse there and the way the wall's built, and Leonard, you may be able to talk to more of this, it's at different levels, deterioration, we're just afraid that that west wall, that the roof collapses could push out and could even push out towards the front and that it is in serious condition. We have a city attorney, this building was purchased for dollar by a church that has since fell apart, and there was what we thought was an exchange of the property, but that city attorney advises me it still belongs to this church. That party has moved to Indiana, and after repeated attempts, we've had no success of contacting him, but we're continuing to work that angle. And looking at other resources, way back when, when we looked at this, this was anywhere from a 60 to $100,000 demolition due to the party wall and other factors related to this building. Now, you were up there, Leonard, you might have more to say as to what you saw.
Yeah, the portion that had collapsed along the west wall, it was hard to determine how much it had moved the wall. The masonry on the outside isn't in good condition, there's open mortar joints. The the problem with the way the structure is and the additional weight of the rooftop units is there's no way to know and predict exactly what will happen. It's going to continue to deteriorate, it's going to continue to fall, and how the pieces as they come down are going to react with what remains. So it's going to put some undetermined forces on different points of the wall that potentially could bring down not only the west wall, but also the north wall.
When you say that the it would, the wall would push out, you're talking about the potential that it would collapse onto the sidewalk.
Correct.
Right?
And.
And that's, you know, it's a busy sidewalk.
Yeah, I I think when a wall, the field is, well, one and a third, the height of the wall, it's.
Yes, yes.
It's farther than the sidewalk, that's why the barriers were placed where they were.
Even then, I don't know if, it'd probably go, I mean, as it spread, it'd probably get out into the street.
Yeah.
At least it wouldn't be on top of them, is.
The building in such a state that I know we're setting a date of August, considering setting a date of August 27 of 2020 for a public hearing for the condemnation, is the structure in such a state that it may actually come down prior to us being able to, I mean, who knows, but the possibility exists that that building could collapse prior to us even getting to August 27? Is it in that bad state of, and and maybe we don't have an answer for that?
I don't think you got an answer to that. I think we need to proceed with the condemnation. The barriers are set, I think David and I had discussed the role in, I think your intent of contacting him is to require him to get a structural engineer, and that's why we're, when we talked about it, let's go ahead and set a date for a hearing, and during that time, he can prove to the city whether the structure is safe or not. And then with our notices on the 27th of August, we can proceed with condemnation, and at that time, the decision would be made. If he's got a structural engineer report that would prove otherwise, then we can listen to that. If not, then I think that's up for discussion of how to proceed at that point. But for for us, it's the building owner's responsibility to prove to us that the structure is safe.
All right, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have none.
I have none, mayor.
Then at this time, I'll call for a motion.
I move to set the date of August 27, 2020 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 201 East Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item C, consider authorizing funding for retirement program.
Mayor and commissioners, when we had a retreat earlier this year, had a conversation with Commissioner Yussi, and he was talking about some things that they did for the evergreen employees as it relates to sick leave, to encourage them not to utilize their sick leave and not abuse it, and when they retired, they got a a bigger portion of that when they retired as an incentive. We have looked at that particular piece of our policy for several years, it's been set at a maximum of 25% up to $2,000 since Barb said since she's been here, and she thinks it was several years before that, so I think it's probably the late 70s, it has not been changed. If you do a an inflation calculator, that $2,000 today is worth several thousand dollars. So we're way behind the ball on on getting that piece updated. So that that is one piece of this. The other piece of this is insurance. The number one reason eligible employees do not retire is because they can't afford the health insurance. It's it's a big issue for them. So we're working on, I have worked with the admin team on a possible program that might assist with that. And actually, this program was modeled off a program we did in 2011. We did a voluntary retirement incentive, and it has some of the same aspects of that, but we kind of modified it a little bit to be more equitable. And to be eligible for this program, you would have to be eligible to retire under capers, and that could be early capers retirement. And you must also notify the the city in writing three months in advance before you retire, six months preferred. The reason I put that in there is because we want time to get people into those positions and be cross-trained while that person that did that job can be available to help with that transition. I think that's very important to the, you know, continuing the operations of the city as smoothly as possible. The years of service must be completed at the city, and they must be uninterrupted, so it's from the last hire date. And of course, if the city passes away after retiring, their monthly health insurance credit would end. The sick leave payout would still be the 25%, but we would remove the $2,000 maximum and just not have a maximum, so it would be based on however much they have banked. There is a maximum hours of sick leave of 1,440 hours that's been in place for many, many years, and that would stay the same. The health insurance would consist of one year of credit consisting of 110% of the cost of a single option A health insurance plan with single dental for every 10 years of continuous service from the last hire date. So any additional above that they could apply to, like if they need a family plan or if they have some optional life or vision they want to port, then they could put that additional credit towards that. If they don't use the credit, then it's forfeited. And then that amount would actually be adjusted when our Blue Cross and Blue Shield renews, which is September 1 of each year, of how much that credit is. And the pros on this is it would encourage employee retention until retirement eligibility by providing an incentive for years of service, thus reducing turnover rates and retraining costs. Having a straight payout of 25% of accumulated sick leave would impact an employee's decision of being thoughtful about their utilization of sick leave, especially when they're close to retirement and they know they're only going to get $2,000, then we, you you will see this a lot, we call it the 85 points flu, we'll start using that sick leave and because they know they're not going to get any benefit from it, so, you know, there isn't any incentive not to do that. Employees that have not abused their sick leave will be awarded for their dedication and other, we looked at some other employers, the admin team, they'd had some experience with other employers they had worked for, and they said that they provide like a third payout of sick leave, so I don't think 25%, keeping it at that level is out of line. And then the liability to the city would be limited by the years of service for the insurance credit and the amount of accumulated sick leave for the sick leave payout. It would not be an ongoing expense per retiree. And more pros would be the employee that desires to retire but continue to work only for insurance, have an option to do something different, not feel trapped in their jobs. And attitudes, as you know, are very contagious. By reducing the number of employees who are ready to retire and may be burnt out, it provides an opportunity to increase morale, productivity, and customer service within the departments. Generally, when employees leave, the replacements do not make the same amount when starting, so you would have some cost savings there. And when employees retire, it provides an opportunity to reevaluate efficiencies and possibly restructure operations, like we were talking about earlier. Everything's continuing continually continually changing, and this gives us an opportunity to reevaluate that. Creating this incentive as a general policy for all would be consistent and would reduce animosity felt when their employees who were not provided incentive in the past was not offered to them. I can tell you, the people that retired in 2012 were not too happy about the deal the people got in 2011, and it just so happened that way, but, you know, it does create animosity because they put in the same years of service and they didn't get any additional benefit. Retirees would leave on a positive note, knowing they were appreciated for their years of service, and then it's city cares about their well-being. This in turn could affect the ability to recruit future employees by word of mouth. You know, they, you know they're going to get asked, hey, I hear the city has openings. Is the city a good place to work? And then the cons would be there would be more retirees on the city's insurance. Retirees can already stay on the city's insurance, and we do have retirees on that, but they pay 100% of the cost of of the policy. It would require some minor additional record-keeping duties to track the program, and it would be an additional annual expense in the budget. The first year implemented, there could be as many as eight retirements based on current eligibility, but once the first year passes, there would only be one to three employees per year that would be eligible, looking at forecasting the next six years. Over the last two years, there's only been two retirements per year, so it pretty much averages, once you get past that surge, you're looking at about two retirements a year. These are the estimated renewal rates for our Blue Cross Blue Shield. Lacey and I met with Rita last week, and so that shows the 110%, a single with dental is 50553, that's where I came up with that. It also shows the amount of the family plan. And then here's a comparison of the proposed retirement program as compared to the 2011 voluntary retirement incentive program based on the capers eligible employee with 32 years of service. And I chose the. And I chose the thirty-two because I took the eight that were eligible, and that was the average tenure. It shows you that for the years of service, thirty-two years, the months eligible for single are the same under both plans. The previous plan provided for a different level of insurance that had a higher deductible. We're looking at the level that has a lower deductible. Generally, those that retire, their income's cut in half or less, and so out-of-pocket is a big deal to them. So, somebody that's worked here thirty-two would be, years would be eligible for three point two years of single coverage, and the maximum cost based on the one hundred and ten percent on the rates that we're renewing at September first, over the three point two years would be the nineteen thousand four twelve thirty-five. The per-year cost, of course, is the six thousand and sixty-six. The other option on the two thousand eleven that they did previously is you could get six months of family insurance for every ten years, which you can see even doing one point six years, that employee, if they picked that under the two thousand eleven plan, would have got a benefit of twenty-five thousand two forty-six over their, that time period, which is considerably more than the single option. We thought this would make it more equitable by just providing a credit that's the same for everybody, and if they choose to do family, then they can make that adjustment. And the two thousand eleven one also provided an option for a one-time payout of five thousand in lieu of health insurance. I did not include that in this one. And the proposed program would provide an average sick leave payout based on the eight employees that are eligible of seventy-seven hundred dollars based on the employees that are currently eligible for CAPERS retirement. And closing thought, if we can afford to do it in the worst of times, how can we not afford to do it in other times? You know, we usually do it when we're in a crisis. If we can do it when we're in a crisis, why wouldn't we just have this as an ongoing program that's consistent and available to everyone? And back on that question, I asked you if the city was a good place to work. We want our retirees to say the city was a great place to work, and we want our employees to be happy and to know they are appreciated for their many years of dedicated public service when the time comes to retire.
You don't want a lot of turnover in a department. When I left Evergy, there were six, five gentlemen and one woman that retired, and I think the gal had probably twenty-eight years of service, and the senior retiree had forty-two years of service, and everybody else was probably thirty-three to thirty-seven, thirty-eight years. So, you had all that experience go out the door, but it was a good place to work. It has its issues. I don't care where you work at, there's always issues with an employer, no matter where you work. But they were constantly looking at reviewing plans they had, whether it was medical, dental, health, sick leave, whatever, constant looking to see where they could make improvements that would be beneficial to the company, because they're the ones that are making the payout, but to the employees also, that would be an incentive for them to stay, finding ways to reduce an overuse of sick leave, which I talked to Kelly about. And Kelly, thank you very much for doing the research and realizing that this hadn't been updated since the seventies. I know you put a lot of time and effort to this, and it's long overdue that we needed to look at, and so I commend you for that. But that turnover, if you have a consistent rate of turnover, especially a high turnover, it's a revolving door, and you lose those costs associated with bringing an employee in. They don't stay long enough for you to recoup the training cost, whether it's training or uniforms or whatever you provide. That goes out the door every time someone leaves, and you're starting over from scratch again. So, the idea is to keep employees here, so you don't have that turnover, and you develop that good working relationship, and you develop that cohesiveness that makes that a good working unit, because they all become familiar with each other, and they know their strengths and their weaknesses, and it builds that foundation for that department. And with a good leader, you can really accomplish just about anything you set out to. So, it's very critical to any organization that you strive to do that, find ways to do that, people say, you know, I'm glad I'm here, and I want to be here.
Yeah. And when they're in that mid-career time, it's critical when sometimes they get antsy and start thinking, well, is there something else I could be doing? And this is one more tool in our toolbox that would maybe make them think twice and think, hey, I've got this great benefit when I retire, maybe I need to just stick it out and stay here, and we want to keep those employees.
I know when we left, the younger guys were, they were more than happy to see us walk out the door, because they knew that would give them opportunities to move up, because there's nothing more discouraging if you're in a two or three-man department, and you know these people are going to be there for probably a lot longer than they would normally be. It gives those younger people a chance to say, no, I've got a chance to move up, because these people are not, they're going to leave. They have an incentive to leave when the time comes. They're not going to stay here because of, you know, they need insurance or whatever. So, it provides an incentive for those, I just hang on a little bit longer, I'll have a chance to move in that position.
Right.
And then somebody will move up in the position, I just vacate it. So, it gives them an opportunity there. It's not a dead end. It's not a dead-end place. I do have opportunities here. If not in this department, I can move to another department.
Exactly.
So, and that's important.
Exactly.
Commissioner Hayes?
Kelly, you've given us some cost impact on the individual basis, but what I'm looking for, I guess, is can you tell us what the impact to the two thousand twenty-one budget is planning to be for this adjustment?
Some of it will depend, just because they're eligible to retire doesn't mean that they're going to retire.
Indeed. So, you have to create an estimate in order to budget for it.
Right.
So, do you have an estimate?
Well, the estimate would be that six thousand dollars per year on the, per employee.
Right. And how many employees are you estimating? Two?
Well...
You're estimating two for two thousand twenty-one?
Well, I, we could have up to eight. I don't anticipate we will probably have eight. I anticipate the first year, you're probably going to have maybe, I mean, I'm just guessing here, five or six. But beyond that, when you're looking beyond that, you're probably looking at two per year. Once you get through that first surge, then you're probably looking at an average of two per year, which is what we've had in the past and what we forecast in the future. And Lacey did review this and do a financial review, and she's on board with what we're doing, and...
I appreciate that. What's the, what I'm looking for is a number. What's the finance, what's the, what's the budget change because of this for two thousand twenty-one?
Well, and like I said, it's going to depend on how many you have, but it could be as much as six thousand per year per employee for the insurance portion, and then the amount for the sick leave payout. I actually have that on another spreadsheet, and I can get that to you.
Okay.
I just didn't want to put people's personal identifying information.
I understand. So, worst-case scenario, you're saying six people would retire. Worst-case scenario, they would get that year, six thousand for medical, no.
Yes.
Yes.
And an average of seventy-seven hundred.
Seventy-seven hundred for sick leave. So, that's thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars times six, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roughly eighty thousand dollars the first-year impact, worst-case scenario.
Was that eighty thousand?
Eighty-two thousand two hundred, first-year worst-case scenario.
Yeah, the six employees, yeah.
If it were just two, then of course, it would be more like twenty-seven thousand. So, relative to the total payroll for independents for a year, what's the total payroll for independents for a year?
No, I don't have that offhand. Lacey, do you? No? Where's Lacey?
Roughly, roughly how many millions of dollars? Is it over ten million? Eight million? Anyway, what I'm getting to ultimately here is this is a fraction of one percent, I think, increase in payroll costs, if you include not only wages, but taxes and insurance and other employment costs. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
As a reference point, the general fund only, total personnel costs are around four point six.
Four point six?
Which wouldn't include water and sewer and an airport and...
Of course.
Sanitation.
Of course, and I'm assuming those employees would also qualify for this benefit?
Yes, it's all employees.
Oh, that's, that's, once again, it would be about, worst-case scenario, about one point eight percent, the first year dropping to more like point seven, point six, point seven percent in continuing years.
Once it levels out.
Once it levels out. Thank you, that's my question.
It's interesting that, you know, we saw a need in two thousand eleven, but you never translated into reality for another nine, nine years, you know, retirement, and the CAPERS program is good, but like you're bringing out, that you've got employees that are dedicated and maintaining their health and accumulate the time. So, how are you showing appreciation for that now? I'm sure that during those times, people came to work when they didn't feel good, which the COVID-nineteen is going to change, I think, our view of that going forward. But over thirty-two years, what do you tell the employee that was faithful and dedicated to show up when they didn't feel like it? And, you know, years, years ago, entering the workforce, friend said, told me what his sick days were going to be allowed per month, and he said, I plan on taking them. So, you know, you've got the, you've got the extremes, and if you're scheduling work to be accomplished in a workday, it's based on everyone showing up, and it does, it does affect production. So, the question, I guess, with Commissioner Hayes looking at, with two thousand twenty-one, we're working on that budget, so this would be, if it's approved today, this would be included in the budget, and it wouldn't be a dramatic impact on what we budget. Is that correct, Lacey?
Correct.
So, if we initiate it today, is there any way to tell what kind of, would it be a detrimental impact to the two thousand twenty budget?
No, I will actually incorporate an estimate. Some of the numbers will impact two thousand twenty. I'll incorporate an estimate on the revised numbers.
But it won't put us in a, in a problem financially going forward if we initiate this today?
No.
No? Okay. Just wanted to, you brought up a good point that, you know, we, we have to be good stewards, and we don't want to, we want to do the right thing for our employees, but we want to do the right thing for the citizens, that we're not going to neglect a need for them, so. Before we call for a vote, am I, I'm sensing that the commission is in favor to proceed with this, to vote.
I am.
I am also.
Okay. Then, is there any further discussion, commissioners?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
Then with that, I'll call for a vote.
I move to authorize funding for a retirement program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your presentation, your detail, and taking this to the admin team to bring it to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the items on our agenda, except for one, and with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.